It now being a two o'clock, I will call the November 4th, 2024 Board of Selectmen meeting to order. This meeting is being presented for cable cast and YouTube presentation by Area 58 Community Access Media. The video of this meeting is not to be considered an official public record. The approved minutes of the meeting will serve as the official record of the proceedings. Our first agenda item is the tax classification hearing. Mark, you wanna?
So I'll read this notice concerning the tax classification hearing today, Monday, November 4th at 2:00 PM in the Deborah Sanson Room. As required by Massachusetts General Law Chapter 40, Section 50 says, "The Town of Plimpton Board of Selectmen will hold a fiscal year 2025 property tax classification hearing. During the hearing, the Board of Assessors shall provide all the information relevant to making such distinct determination and the fiscal effect of the available alternatives. Based on information provided, the Board of Selectmen shall adopt the residential factor to be used by the Board of Assessors to determine the percentages of the fiscal year 2025 tax levy to be borne by each class of taxable real estate, taxable real and personal property. The public hearing requires a vote of the Board of Selectmen for allocation of property tax classification. All persons interested in this determination may participate and be heard at the time and place stated above."
Thank you. So Holly, you're here?
I'm here, Holly Mary. I'm the Assistant Assessor for the Town of Plimpton. This is my board, and we've just had a board meeting. We have a few things to recommend to you for fiscal 25 classification hearing. On November 4th, 2024, the Plimpton Board of Assessors voted to recommend a factor of one, having residential, commercial, industrial properties assessed at the same rate. I gave you a little handout if you want to follow along. You can only read it or not read it, whatever, I'll just go through it quickly. The Town of Plimpton has just under 25% of commercial property, therefore, a split rate is not recommended. As you can see, the percentage of levy by classes down below, residential, 75%, open space, we have zero, commercial, 12%, industrial, 2.9%, and personal property, 9.3%. This year, fiscal 25, the average assessed value for a single-family house is $532,902. That's going up 3.5% this year. Last year, fiscal 24, single-family homes went up 7.8%. So, a little bit better, a little bit better. Examples of the shift, shift of tax rate were residential, commercial, industrial, personal property. The first one is our tax rate, 1588. This year, it went up 17 cents. If you go down to the next line, you can see that if I shift it from 1477 to residential, the commercial goes up to 1921, and so forth, so forth, going down to 1327, the commercial, industrial, personal property would be 2374. Next page is the approved new growth values. Residential, 1.6 million; personal property, 6.4 million. Then tax levy new growth this year was 127,739. The top five taxpayers in Plimpton, Cisco, EverSource Energy, Brook Street Plimpton Solar One, Light Control Corporation, and GLC Mass Plymouth Site. It's a solar site.
So Light Control now is current, right? So, yeah, I mean, it's nothing, it's not Light Control anymore, right?
That's what it's called, Light Control Corporation, that's what it's called. In our books, we haven't changed it yet.
Okay, so we should just...
This came from a report from our camera system. Okay, so the Board of Assessors has also recommended not to adopt the following, the open space discount. This is for land that's not developed, excluding chapter land, permanent conservation, restricted land, and income-producing parcels. The town is not protected by a lien, and there's no penalty for change of use. Plimpton does not have parcels that are considered open space. The residential exemption, this is for cities and towns such as Boston, the Antucket, and Cambridge, with high second home populations or resort communities. They benefit from this exemption. It's for owners of occupied residential properties and shifts the tax burden to non-resident owners and multi-unit owners. There's no second homes in Plimpton. It's not like a resort community.
Sure.
Small commercial exemptions for communities that have adopted this exemption have a much higher percentage of commercial properties. Like I said on page one, we have 12% commercial, yes. The property owner receives exemption is not required to pass a discount along to the business owners. Plimpton already has adopted the exemption for personal property businesses valued at $2,000 or less. So the Board of Assessors is recommending that the Board of Selectmen vote no to the above exemptions in favor of factor of one, which means the residential and CIP properties are taxed at the same rate for fiscal 2025. I also passed along the LA 5 tip read that you could sign, and I can download right into Gateway with your signatures. And the Board of Assessors would also like to inform the Board of Selectmen that the excess levy capacity for the current year is $283,017.14.
Good.
And that would conclude my presentation.
Just a question, the 1588 tax rate...
We're going up 17 cents from last year.
So up 17 cents.
Yeah.
Okay, and we're going up 3.5, basically.
3.5%, which is great compared to the 7.8% that we had to go last year.
So people shouldn't see the same major hit that they had last year.
Which is good.
Yeah, it is good.
So forgive my ignorance, what is the excess levy capacity?
That's what we're not...
Yeah, we have a certain ceiling that you're not allowed to go over, essentially, and we like to keep some sort of capacity when we're figuring out, like, funding things at town meeting, for example. It's kind of like our safety cushion. You could technically expend up to that, but it would obviously be a huge hit for the taxpayers. So we always try to stay below it, but that is our excess.
Last year, we cut $300,000, a little over $300,000.
Last year was like, what was it, 304 or something like that? So this is good. Like, a lot of places go right up to the limit.
And that was really my question, is that that does leave us a reasonable cushion?
It's like, I would say it's like more than reasonable.
Yes.
You know? Most towns go...
Does the state push back on that at all, though?
No, so interestingly enough, a few years ago, we had a situation where we had so much excess levy capacity that DOR actually kind of sounded the alarm. I think that may have been right as you were coming on board and helped us get everything in order. And, you know, they said it's rare to see towns of this size and not expending that much. And what ends up happening in some of those cases, if you leave that much on the table when you eventually do need to pay for something, fund something, it comes as a huge hit to the taxpayers, so...
And also, I think they were pushing back on, you know, why are you out for grants when you have this excess levy?
Right, exactly, exactly.
I think this is a fair cushion to leave, though.
Though this feels good, yes.
Yeah, this is nice. This is like a good amount.
Okay, so we need a motion, you need a motion.
I pass them along here?
Oh, I'm sorry, thank you. Okay, I'll make a motion to vote no to the open space discount.
A second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
A motion to vote no to the residential exemption?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Motion to vote no to the small commercial exemption?
Second.
I'll make a vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Got lost in all that. Motion to vote in favor of the factor of one, which means the residential, commercial, industrial, and personal property classes are taxed at the same rate for fiscal year 25.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate you guys.
Thank you, Board of Assessors.
I guess we need this signed? Where am I signing here?
Anywhere.
Anywhere, okay. Yeah, it says no signatures displayed, that kind of threw me off.
Great work on getting this pulled together for November. This is fantastic.
I guess maybe mine. Do we need all three?
Yeah, very early.
Yes, please. I'm kind of pleased because Christine, she's got plenty of time.
Yeah.
I know.
Christmas Eve.
Yeah.
Scrambling hard.
This is good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Holly. Have a good day.
Okay, Mike Slusson is here to do an update on the Plimpton Public Library. Welcome, Mike.
Come up as close as you can, and I'll remind you that at least one of us up here has very old ears.
Okay, it's not you, though, right?
We want to hear every word.
Give everybody a copy of this, just what I'm going through.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so I'm just gonna go over some of the things that we've been working on the last, last year or last couple of years at the library, and just give everybody an update on all the, all the really great things that are happening there. So for this year, we just finished submitting our yearly reports for the library. That's our financial report and our statistics report. And we're compliant with everything for that, so we should be eligible, as usual, for our state aid funding, which is usually around $5,000 to $6,000 a year that we get from the state. That's really important money, because that money can be used for anything we want. So if there's a building issue, if there's programming we want to do, it also keeps us certified as a library. So we've met everything for that, so we should look forward to our state aid again next year. Circulation numbers were really good this year, our last fiscal year for the library. Our total checkouts went up by 871, which for our size library is really good. It's really nice to see that, that increase, and it lets me know that people are using the library, people are using the collections. We're making good selections as far as books and movies and other things that we have in our collection. For the buildings and grounds at the library, we just recently received the Green Communities Grant that was going to allow for some heat pump installations at the library. That I can't take much credit for, that was Liz and the Town Properties Committee worked really hard on that, and I think it's gonna be a great benefit to the library, and it's gonna be peace of mind for me. I'm sure most of you are aware that the heating system at the library is a, is a pretty serious concern, so this should mitigate a lot of those issues that we're facing with that now. We're gonna, it looks like, for that work, we're gonna be closed the week of November 11th. Monday, right now, planning for Monday through Friday on that week, we'll see how, as we get towards the end of the week, if they need Saturday as well. Another grant that we just recently got this year was a $20,000 grant from the American Library Association. This was for accessibility in the library, and we were able to get several things with this grant. We had a, a few months back, we had a community roundtable, community discussion, where we talked to people who use the library and asked them, how could we make the library more accessible? There were a lot of ideas, and it was, it was hard to sort of fit everything in under, under the budget, but we've managed with this $20,000 to solve a number of problems, and I think the, the number one problem was our front entrance ramp. If anyone's ever entered the library in the winter, when it's snowing or when it's cold, it's a real hazard, that ramp. So one of the things we got is a map, a heated map, that will be on, on that ramp that is, it has a sensor on it, so it will go on automatically when the temperature is below a certain point and when the moisture is above a certain point. So that should solve the, the issues that we have with the slippery entrance ramp. Another thing we did was install a rain diverter on the roof above the ramp. Part of, part of the issue we were having is that the gutters on that building don't extend out far enough, so anytime there's heavy rain, it cascades right over the gutter and it goes right onto that ramp and just makes it a sheet of ice. So we got a rain diverter installed, so it's still going to go over the gutters, but it's going to be going over into the gardens rather than onto that ramp. Another thing, another issue that came up when we had our community discussion about accessibility was the space in the back, in the adult side of the library, space where we have our first Saturday programs, and it's very tight back there, especially when we have chairs and tables and things like that out. So we, with this $20,000, we got four new mobile foldable tables, those, those we can move all around the library, use wherever we want. We got a new spinning magazine rack, so we can take, right now, if you've been back there, we have about half of the wall is taken up by, by a magazine space. This will completely get rid of that shelf, and we'll have it on a spinning rack. And then we also got eight new single-sided shelves, so that room is going to be completely opened up. The shelves will be, will be along the side of the walls, and we'll have that entire space for chairs, for tables. It's, it's really gonna make a difference back there, it'll make it much more usable. I'm also getting some estimates for some lights on the front of the building over the entrance and the parking lot. Another thing we've done is, and I'm sure Mark is aware of this, we've applied for a CPC funding for a redesign of the back patio of the library. And I think that is a, it's already a nice spot, but it needs, it needs to be more usable. And I think having, having an area out there that we could use for programs, we can use for music, or concerts, or anything that the town wants to, I think it would be excellent. And along with the baseball, I think having those fields redone and the popularity of those, and having it in such close proximity to that, it'll, it'll give people space to use around town. So I'm, I'm excited for that, and we'll be meeting with the CPC in December. Another thing I, I thought I should mention here were the gardens this year. We're really lucky to have volunteers. It was a complete volunteer job on the gardens this year, they looked beautiful. Not only were they, they maintained and weeded throughout the year by probably 15 to 20 different members of the community, we also added new gardens, and this was Allison McSweeney, a Halifax resident, but she's a, she's a frequent visitor to the library and a frequent library user. She put together the whole volunteer committee, she recruited people, and she, she basically took charge of the gardens, and they came out amazing this year. So I'm looking forward to doing that again next year. For our collections, I try, every year I try to do a, a long-term project throughout the year, something that we, we can focus on, that will, will make a change, a positive change at the library throughout the year. This year, what I wanted to do was look at the adult nonfiction collection. Our adult nonfiction collection is very aged, so what we're looking at doing right now is, is weeding out a large number of books. Right now, I'm thinking anything that's, that hasn't been checked out in three years is, is just taking up space on the shelf. So we're gonna weed out anything three or more years on the shelf, and we're gonna be updating that with, with some new books. We're also gonna be moving the nonfiction collection to the back of the library. It's gonna be where the fiction section is now. Looking at our numbers from last year, the fiction is about double the checkouts of what nonfiction is, so I think that makes sense to have that up in the front, where more people will be, will be using it, more people will be seeing it. And then just some, on the back of this page, there's some additional items since the last time that I've spoken to the Board of Selectmen. If you haven't come by and seen our new children's room, I encourage everyone to come by and look at it. It really came out nice. That was a, a huge effort from the library staff to, to get the funding for that, and then also to put in the effort to design it, to pick out the furniture, pick out the colors. And I should say, the trustees played a really key role in that as well. We got new shelving back there, we got new furniture, and we also replaced the, the kids' nonfiction collection. And the numbers, since we've replaced that nonfiction collection, have really skyrocketed, so I think we, we made the right choice with that, and it's, it's really, it's getting, the nonfiction collection is getting used very, very frequently. We also got new carpet throughout the building last year. Another great thing that we have at the library, that's probably one of the most popular things, is with the technology grant we got from the Association for Rural and Small Libraries, we bought all new public computers, we got a 3D printer, which is extremely popular with, with kids and, and adults. I can't count how many things I've printed up over the last couple of years. And we also got virtual reality, which is, is popular as well. And then finally, we also got new double doors in the children's room, and a new emergency exit door in the back of the building. So things are going really well at the library. We have a lot of support from the community, and we have a lot of support from, from the town as well, so I'm looking forward to that continuing in the next few years.
So, Mike, appreciate your efforts and appreciate the comprehensive report. I remember a year or two ago, there was some discussion, and I've forgotten the name of this thing, but it was something like Library of Found Things?
Oh, Library of Things, yeah. So that's another, another collection we have at the library, is our Library of Things, and that's, you could say it's a not books, a collection of not books. So it's, we have all sorts of things, from board games and puzzles, to night vision cameras and trail cams, and Roku's for people to check out. So if you, if you don't have a Disney Plus subscription, but you want to watch something on Disney Plus, you can come check out our Roku and watch about that. And I'd like to expand on that as well, it's all, all sorts of different ideas.
This would probably do great business with leaf blowers this time.
Yeah, I've, I've thought about that. One of the ideas with, with the Library of Things is getting things that people may use once or twice a year, but don't want to go out and, you know, pay $500 for and then use it once. So things like leaf blowers, or things like, a lot of libraries will have the, the roof snow reeks, so to, you know, to get the snow off of your roof, or carpet cleaners, or you know, things like that, things that you might only use a couple times a year. Why buy it when you can come check it out at the library? So that's, that's a collection that I'd like to expand on as well.
That's a, I think that's a great project. I hope that expands. Moreover, I hope people kind of become aware that it's there.
Yeah, yeah, we, and people, it does get good use, certain items more than others. The Roku's get checked out, are pretty much always checked out. And I'm glad you mentioned that, because one of the other things I wanted to mention here is, for our, our adult nonfiction collection that we're replacing, we have right now up on Facebook, an, an interest survey for the people around town. So I want to know what people are interested in, so I know what books I can get. I mean, I can look at what's been checked out, but I also want to hear from people who maybe don't use the library, what, what would get them in, what type of books could we get that they might be interested in to come, to come in and check out. So I encourage anyone who's, who's listening, or anyone who's interested, to check out our Facebook, take the survey, and let me know what, what books you'd like to see in the library.
The, go ahead.
Maybe that should be attached to our Facebook page for the Town of Plimpton, too. Maybe I'd like a host, and have a post about that.
We'll share it to the town, like, people over there.
The kiosks that we, you've got a couple around town, how are they doing?
Good, I actually just, I just closed them down for, for the year.
For the winter?
But those get a lot of use, especially the one at Denet. I don't think this one gets, up by the fire station, gets as much use, but the one at Denet, every couple weeks I would go and check it out, and there would always be different books in there, because people are taking it and swapping it. This year, I think I filled it initially, and then that was it. People from the community took books.
Just keep going, great.
So those are going really well.
Should we move this one?
Uh, maybe.
Something to think about.
Well, I'm thinking, I, I think it's a good spot, because it's near the fields.
Yeah.
And maybe give it another year there, see, see how it goes. I don't think it's been, it's been neglected, it's definitely been used.
Yeah.
But not as much as the one at Denet, but that just might be because there's more action at that field.
When you look at the, I'm sorry.
Does he do the one here?
Yeah, the one right by the snack shack.
Oh, no, I meant the...
It's the little one in our...
Oh, oh, this one, yeah, yep.
All those people looking at that.
Yeah.
I'm glad, I have to fill that one up, I'm glad you're reminded.
The, when you look at DVDs versus books now, books holding their own?
Oh, yeah, books, books are definitely holding their own. In fact, DVDs aren't holding their own.
They're not?
Yeah, it's, there's, there are people that check out DVDs, but a lot of people come in and tell me, you know, I don't even have a DVD player anymore. I personally don't have one.
Streaming is the big, yeah.
And that's why I think having things like the Roku to check out, you know, where you can check out one DVD, or you could check out one Roku and have access to thousands and thousands of things to watch. So I think expanding that collection, maybe getting a, right now, we have Disney Plus and we have Hulu on the Roku, so maybe expanding that into an HBO, or Netflix, or something along those lines would get some more, some more checkouts as well.
Is there any sort of synergy with the school library?
Yeah, so I, I talk to her frequently, I, I'll, usually at the beginning of the summer, I'll go to the school and talk about our summer reading program. And I'll also, I also go to the school and do, for Read Across America, I do a storytime with the, with the kids there, which is, I have to say, my favorite day of the year.
I'm a big fan, so, you know, I think you're doing a great job.
Well, thank you, thank you. It's, it's a great town to work in, I feel like I have the support of the town, and I feel like I have the support of the community, so it's...
I hear nothing but good feedback.
Thank you.
It's nice, because it's interesting, when we hold the first Saturday meetings, you know, it's, the population is my age.
Yeah.
And yet, on the other side of the building, a meeting's going on with air but this high.
Yeah.
So it's nice to see that difference, that synergy.
And I think that the new children's room has, has really been a boon to, to bringing in new, new families. I think there are, there's a lot of young families in town with, with young kids, and I think once word got out that we had this great new children's room with all this great stuff to do, I started to see a lot of faces that I hadn't seen before, so...
I will also say, when we have some outside speakers come in, when they walk into that room in the back...
Yeah.
They, their mouths drops open, you know, they all rave about the architecture of the room. Because you just don't see it in these modern buildings, so it's really...
I agree, it's, it's a special building, and that, especially that side of the building is, is, is beautiful, and it's, it's welcoming, and I think with this, with this grant, with the new shelves back there, they're gonna match the sort of the decor that we already have. It's not gonna be any, any big changes, and I think we can, we can work, too, on making that room even more, even more welcoming, and I know I've talked to you about maybe getting some things from the Historical Society and putting them up on some, some Plimpton-centered things from the Historical Society, putting them up on the walls. So that, that'll be a, a great community room.
That's a project for this year, for this coming year, yeah, yeah, great.
We enjoy the chico chicos.
Oh, good, they all had fun.
It seems like it's growing, more and more kids.
Yeah.
It's great to see.
Well, Heather, Heather Sander, who's our, does all of our storytimes, does an excellent job, and she, she brings in a lot of, a lot of people. And word gets around, too, because I talk to other, other library directors and other children's librarians, and people come into their libraries and talk about Ms. Heather, so it's, it's great to have her.
Good, excellent. Have any comments?
No, he's doing a fantastic job.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Thank you, Mike, appreciate it. If we can do anything, let us know.
I will. Thanks, take care.
Mike, you're going to do an update on the community preservation?
Yeah, a quick update. We had three new applications during the application period for Community Preservation Act funds, the application period September 1st through October 15th. The committee hasn't met yet to review these, so my purpose today is really just to let my fellow selectmen know that there are three new projects that we will be looking at. Our process is to have a first meeting, meeting with the applicants, questions about the project, potentially suggestions that might help or improve, or at least clarify the project. Then early next year, another meeting to look at any revisions in the applications. At that time, we send the applications out to all the boards, commissions, and committees in town, seek all their input. Once we have their input, we have a public hearing. We decide then which projects would be referred to town meeting for a final vote. Most of the time, the applications are referred, though not always. So our next meeting, which will be the first review of these, is December 3rd and at 5:30 percent in this bill, or at 5:30 PM in this building. Anyone's welcome to come. Just a super brief overview of the three projects. The first one comes from the library. We did a project with them several years ago, it was a really good one. We, chronic dampness problems in the basement that just never got straightened out, and we were able to find a cost-effective solution. So we're excited about having another project from the library. This one, as Mike mentioned, would be a redoing in the patio in the back, the putting in of granite steps along an amphitheater-like approach and landscaping. So this would be a meeting area, recreation area, presentation, games. Looks like a pretty interesting project. So that's project number one, that's from the library. Project number two is from the Recreation Commission. We did a project with them last year, which was the renovation of the small field and lighting. They'd like to continue that process, fence needing replacement, and then a whole bunch of upgrades on the large field. That one is coming in, I think it's $64,000. The library one I didn't mention is something like $52,000. And then the third project is Open Space Committee has come back to us asking for further pre-acquisition open space funds. We've done a article like that two or three times, kind of important article because it gives them money to be kind of agile when an opportunity arises. It's that kind of money ahead of time, not having to wait for town meeting, that's allowed us to do, to create Cato's Ridge, to create Two Brookes Preserve, and especially to create Turkey Swamp. So they'll be back there looking for $40,000 this time. We'll need to check in with them, particularly because the stumbling blocks invariably on these projects are making sure that prevailing wage has been fit in, making sure that proper procurement things have been done. And what Community Preservation Committee has always required essentially is a really significant over-budget fund, usually put in at 20%, added to the application fees so we don't get to a place where a project can't be finished. That's most of what I had to say. The only other thing to say is, for citizens concerned about taxes, the money involved in all these projects is money that has already been collected and included in that is the 20% to 30% state match that we wouldn't have otherwise. And just to give people a feel for what our balances are, aside from the projects underway already, in the open space bucket, we have $10,000, historic reserves $60,000, community housing $149,000, and then the budget reserve and the undesignedated $352,000, a small amount of administrative funds. The point being that even beyond the projects already going on, we have $575,000. We've been very frugal over the years and careful, really, really careful actually, with CPA dollars. And it gives us the opportunity, when a really good project comes along, to have funds to deal with it. I might just highlight the one about the community housing. We have $150,000 in that money that will be dedicated to some form of community housing. I doubt that would be used to build a single house these days that would even barely buy a housing, a buildable lot. But I think what we envision is someday the opportunity to use that as seed money for other grants to come in. Truth being, we're always on the lookout, along with other committees in town, for a large tract of land that could become a multi-use project. That would include affordable housing, agriculture, open space, community well, and we're always keeping an eye out for that. And some of these funds someday, when we find the right property, could be dedicated to that. So that's what we're about and the work we're doing.
Yeah, that's great. How many people are on the board?
There are nine of us. Most of us mandated by the Community Preservation Act from various boards and commissions, and then two or three of us that are appointed by the Board of Selectmen.
Okay. Good stuff. I mean, we've certainly, when you look at the projects over time, it's been amazing.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's the most fun to drive around town and know we did that project, know we did that project. I sort of play this game of which one I'm most proud of, albeit I love the, all the open space projects, the playground at elementary school. And for one reason or another, that silly damp library that was a thorn in everyone's sides forever, and I'm just able to just take care of that one.
Yeah, yeah.
And actually, that's my rave, I might as well, can I get my rave out of the way ahead of time? So my rave is the Community Preservation Act and the committee. The Community Preservation Act gives us the chance to work on these kinds of projects that might not be done otherwise. And I think part of the genius was the product, the categories chosen. Part of the genius was the name. Community preservation is exactly what these kinds of projects do. It is open space preservation, historic preservation, those kinds of things that make a community and preserve the community. And my last piece is the Community Preservation Committee. I think I've been on it about 15 years, probably chaired it for a dozen years. No offense to the Board of Selectmen or any other board or commission in town, it's the best committee in town. We have more funds, people bring us cool projects, we work with them to spit them up and make them even better. And better, and better yet, we have money to deal with it. So great committee to be on, and if there's ever an opening out there, don't miss the chance, the opportunity.
So this is a paid commercial, that's it?
Yeah, there you go, I did it. Paid for by citizen support for the great projects that keep the town going.
Big fan of this too. Yeah, I mean, it's, it's been great. We've certainly done a lot of things in the Historical Society, you know, it's been a real help.
Yep.
Okay. Warrants paid, Bree. Town administrator updates.
So we have, going out for quotes, the specs will be available Wednesday, is the insulation work that needs to be done at this building up in the attic as part of the roof replacement project. We've had some bumps in the road as far as getting that project done and through to completion. But our hope is that somebody can mobilize pretty quickly and get the spray foam insulation done so that we can move on from that project. So specs are available. Wednesday, we have our architect on board who's assisting us with that. And we hope to ideally get something in place, a contract, hopefully for your first meeting in December. We'll be at a spot where we can sign off on a contract to get that work done before it gets too chilly out.
Good.
So that's moving ahead. As Mike Slosson mentioned, we have the contractor lined up for that work at the library. And he had indicated that if there are any programs that were pre-scheduled, he'd work on finding, either seeing if they can meet here or at the Police Department Community Room, something like that. So he'll make sure that it's put out there on social media and everything if people are looking for their normally scheduled programming. We have an internal financial team meeting coming up late next week. A key part of that was actually the work that Holly did and the Board of Assessors getting us to this spot where we're at today. So we'll be looking at everything, kind of big picture perspective on things for fiscal '26. We're also planning on having a very preliminary discussion with the Town Properties Committee Chairperson about what their vision is as far as timing and affordability to get going with the fire station project.
I'll be there for that, too.
Yeah, yeah. And that said, we have, it's the same date as your next meeting, on November 18th, there is a finance committee meeting that's being set up, and some of the school folks will be coming to that. I think that they're having some budget issues at Denneitt in this current fiscal year as a result of some things with Silver Lake and the special education funding. So they want to talk to the finance committee about that, but that's an open public meeting.
Is that at the same time, or is that?
No, it's at four.
Four o'clock, okay, great.
And that one, you're going to post for us as well?
Correct, I'll post it just so that there's a forum.
And what was the date on the one with the Chair of Town Properties?
That's just an internal staff meeting. It's November 14th, I believe. Is that the Thursday? Yes. Yeah, so we should have a lot of good information for that finance committee meeting. But my thought is that after the finance meeting on the 18th, they think that people need to start thinking about like big picture for next fiscal year. We're going to have to obviously fund finishing off the well project for the town campus. Can't do anything if we don't have water, and it's one of the conditions with DEP that we need to construct those wells. So the remaining ARPA funds are not going to cover that to completion. So we're going to have to kick in money for that. We need to look at the fire station and next steps for that. And then if they are having more difficulties at Silver Lake as far as the schools go, I think it's all things that need to be on our radar. And I think when we're looking at next fiscal year and going into that budget process, it's just stuff that we all need to keep in mind. And I think we need to be looking at it from a very broad perspective to make sure that we're not, you know, doing one thing that somehow negatively impacts something else.
We've got a, got a lot of variables.
A lot of variables, a lot to think about in terms of timing and what is the most advantageous for the town. Same thing if we're going to be borrowing, you know, looking at those rates and, I don't know, maybe some different things should be rolled together. Maybe there are ways of doing some of this work that we haven't really thought about. But I think that we're going to want everybody's buy-in and involvement with that. So that's happening. Another thing to think about too, I was speaking to somebody over the weekend who does a lot of work with municipalities with like road construction contracts. And they were asking how we fund our road repairs, because the Chapter 90 money, while it's great, is rarely enough to truly maintain your infrastructure. And I said, oh, well typically each year, we appropriate from our capital fund, usually around $200,000 or so, keeps getting funded each year. And they were saying that in some of the towns that they've worked in, they've actually done like borrowing, and they've done a set amount like each year for 10 years, and it gets it to a place where the infrastructure is largely up to date. And they said, you know, you wouldn't have to maybe project it out for 10 years, but if you've got a fairly good rate and you borrowed and you could put it out for a little bit, but if it would settle like all your infrastructure that after so many years, let's say, whether it's eight years or 10 years, that your infrastructure could be maintained with the Chapter 90 money by itself, like then it wouldn't be that constant withdrawal from the capital fund. So I don't know if that would work for us or not, but it was definitely an interesting way of funding some of that work. And I think as we go forward, especially where the ARPA money is going to become a thing of the past, kind of like the CARES money, like that ran out at a certain point, I think a lot of the cities and towns are going to need to get creative and figure out other means of getting some of these projects done and making it feasible.
Well, there's no doubt that the capital account was a wise thing. It served us as well. And almost every town that talks to, we talk to says we wish that we had done that when there was a major influx of industry. I'm not sure if it makes sense for us, but I think it's worth the financial team taking a look at and discussing and see, you know, come back with some thoughts.
So that's all I have for my update. In correspondence, we, this is exciting, we received our first projects on town grounds and town buildings form.
Is it from us?
Well, no, so it's from the Recreation Commission, which they already had approval to do this work. It's kind of finishing off their original CPC project. But I really appreciate Mark Riley and Angelo Boccolini and all the work that they've done. So they wanted to make sure that they were on firm footing with everybody as far as some last-minute superficial work over at Holt Field. There's some different like lips in the concrete and some different things over there that they want to smooth out. And they also want to flatten the area and deal with some like ruts and dips in the ground and everything for the site of the future walking path. So they're already set up to do this, but I wanted to bring it forward nonetheless, so that if you see them working out there, you know what that is. It's all pre-approved and it's pretty much being done with volunteers. They've done a ton of work out there with volunteers, it's really remarkable.
If somebody had told me two years ago, we would have lights on the field, we'd have graded the field for the smaller field, and we're having new fencing, all the things that it's, it takes people with the energy to go off and make that happen.
It's a good collaboration. And certainly, we approve CPC funds for that, but they've done a really good job of bringing in volunteer labor and fundraising. Those are the great projects when they're multi-sources, multiple sources, and it's not relying just on tax dollars. It's great.
And one other thing I just wanted to mention, for an upcoming meeting, I think we should have an agenda item regarding the old townhouse and some punch list items of work that needs to be done there. In the interim, I would like to get some preliminary pricing on insulating that room that the mold remediation was done in. Because right now, if that room's being heated, it's...
It's not. The door is closed, I don't know how it's...
I know, but there's heat, yeah, getting out.
You sure? Because I was told it was shut off.
No, no, it's going through the vent and I just, I don't want us... We have a really good setup though with that heat pump now. We got our energy costs like almost down to...
I'm not opposed to it, but it seems to me you can just close off the heating panel. The... the piece in there.
I don't think so.
You can do it in any room, in any house.
It's still, there was still, like, heat.
Somebody's...
Yeah.
And who's telling us this?
Steve. Yeah.
I'll speak to him, but go ahead, sure.
Okay, so we're going to get some pricing, so that we can finish that up and not have the heat getting out.
Okay. So you've done your rave, Mr.?
I did.
Yeah. Dana, anything you want to mention?
I'm good.
So I guess I have a rave...
You didn't do the minutes.
Hmm?
You didn't do the minutes.
Oh, do we have minutes? Which ones?
10:21. They were sent out, a couple had edits, I did them and they sent them.
Uh, yes. I was okay with those, I did read those. You okay with those? Mike?
Yes.
Okay. So I'll make a motion that we accept the minutes of October 21st as edited. Is that...
This one's written now.
As written now, okay.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Great. So my rave would be, I got it. One is that this election is finally drawing to a close, and the TV, I can finally watch it without being overwhelmed with election commercials. So that's going to be a big plus. Also, I think of a shout-out for the veterans, for the Council on Aging and the work they do with the Director of Elder Affairs, to put on the Veterans Breakfast Buffet each, each month. I think it's really important, and I think they're doing a great job. And if there's any veterans out there that aren't aware of it, they should drop in. I think they'd find people that are of their same opinions and share some of their stories. So unless we have anything else, I'll make a motion that we close the meeting of November 4th.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.